Could you make everyone to the June 10th meeting of the Select Board? If everyone would please silence your phones and stand me in joining other pledges. Mention of allegiance. What allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start this evening with the, with a public hearing on the issuance of building permit for two week out Flower Drive. It's a private road for Tyler and Nicole Conroy, map 112, lot 16. So they're before us looking for building permit. If anybody would like to see any of the information from the planning board, I'd gladly share it.
Do you have a plot plan?
Um, I do not believe I do. I have pictures of the road that are in the report here, the general report from it. That was all. It is an expansion of an existing building and it moves back away from the lake.
I have a plot plan.
There we go. Would you like to see his plot plan?
Yes, if you don't believe so.
Thank you. I don't know what the total is, but I know they're pretty much all going down the end of it. So there's a fair amount of grading to be done as per typical. I know better than to say that. Are you upset with that, George?
I am, thank you very much.
Does anyone else want to see it? Oh, you can go ahead. The, it is an 18 by 24 addition remodel, existing driveway improvements retaining law, new sewage disposal system. They're doing a pretty reasonable size upgrade here. Any comments from the board?
Any comments from the board?
No, I have none. Thank you.
And the only question I had was for the acting highway supervisor was about the apron coming out onto the main road. Just if that was acceptable in its current state or if it needed to be upgraded like we have done on several other dirt roads transitioning to asphalt roads. Hold on, that state road, I understand that.
Certainly that would be a decision that the board would make. We, I spoke, Connor and I spoke briefly about that issue, but we haven't, uh, been come forward with any kind of a policy proposal at this point.
Okay.
So it would be similar to, it would be a board decision, similar to what the board did with companies built with the ASK, but it is a state road.
Yeah, I know there have been some gentle discussion around that, so I was interested to know what your thoughts and feedback were.
Well, I think from a fire protection standpoint, emergency services, high road, people need to pull out onto roads. Sometimes you want to make sure you're distracted and you'll be able to get out. So from a, certainly from a town road perspective, we like the aprons because they protect the town investment in the road. That's a state road, take investment, but again, with the speed of the vehicles traveling up and down the state highway, I think it certainly is not a bad precedent that that piece, uh, at the apron pace and people could, uh, be sitting on the ground to get over the road.
Jim.
Yeah.
Um, I believe the states in the process are designing the tie-ins. They want you to a soft cut and then mill in two feet. So there's no joint there, so it overlaps a previous one. So it's only more intensive than just tying in.
Any other comments? Job, do you have any input that you would like to share on that or your thoughts on tying any of that in?
From a town's point of view, I think the important thing was to protect our town roads and the edges of our town roads. Or it's out on the state road, the state a lot of times will swing out when they do their paving and it kind of protects their edges. So to me, that was always the intent of that was to protect the roadway, not, because it's pretty flat here as far as, um, the problem is you have the driveway sometimes if they come up, there's no stacking area.
Right.
But that particular road has plenty of flatness there, so it's a good stack.
Thank you. Looking forward like, looking towards position like the meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Bailey, aye?
Aye.
Article five?
Napa.
All right. Very good. Congratulations and best of luck with the year's renovation.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing on the sale of map 234, lot 1.4 inches pursuant to RSA 4114 to TurboCam and its affiliates, and I will be recusing myself for this, so Tracy, you are taking over.
Is this our final public hearing on this? Or we've added the additional lot?
Added the additional lot.
So it is hearing one, two, or three?
Hearing one of two of a six-week process.
Okay. So we originally had proposed and approved and brought forward to the residents of the town, two lots that would be sold to a business in town named TurboCam. They have requested that we consider an additional lot that is owned by the town in the sale process, and this is a public hearing in relation to adding that third lot, the other two of which have previously been approved. Any comment from the public?
The only thing I'll add, select person Harakop, is the TurboCam, this business went through design review with the planning board, and there were concerns with wetland and wetland buffer impacts for the proposal on those two parcels. And so this proposal of adding the third lot is an effort to eliminate the wetland and wetland buffer impact of the building. They'll still be going through the planning board, just like any other applicant. This is just a public hearing on the ability for the board to sell this third lot to TurboCam for the $30,000 bill, or $30,000 square foot bill, excuse me.
Select person, air?
This addresses all my concerns I brought up previous.
Yes, I think that in your original statements, probably two months back, you recommended the sale of this lot.
And then I feel comfortable there's a 110 cents for it.
Very good. Any other comments from the board?
None.
So this will close portion of the first public hearing. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Appointments. Chair first. May I have Aiden Thomas Aaron and Tyler Stephen Mallett come on up here? Do you gentlemen know why you're here? If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves so everyone knows who you are.
Hi, I'm Aiden Hurd and I'm an Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Tyler Mallett and I'm also an Eagle Scout.
So the town of Barrington, Aiden Thomas Aaron and Tyler Stephen Mallett. This is a proclamation for you gentlemen to whereas in order to earn the distinction of becoming an Eagle Scout, there are numerous qualifications that a scout must possess. Whereas Eagle Scout, Aiden Thomas Aaron and Tyler Stephen Mallett of Troop 5, 358, Boy Scouts of America, Barrington Firemen's Association, did in fact fulfill all the requirements for this distinction and rank and whereas in doing so demonstrated the necessary personal and technical qualities to be awarded the rank of Eagle Scout. Now, therefore, we the Select Board of the Town of Barrington, New Hampshire, do proclaim June 9th, 2019, Aiden Thomas Aaron Day, Tyler Stephen Mallett Day, in the Town of Barrington, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring these exceptional, you know, these exceptional young men who in, who is an inspiration to us all and congratulate them on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. In where, in, excuse me, in, within whereof, we have, we have here unto our hand and cause the seal of the Town of Barrington to be affixed this 10th day of June, 2019. Thank you very much, guys. We also would like to have library recognition for Wendy Rowe.
Wendy loves these things. She can tell. If you were kindergarten, you'd have to agree. So we'll all pretend we're seven. My name is Lindsay Mazzias and I'm the chair of the library trustees, and I'm very excited to be here tonight. Wendy Rowe, our children's librarian, is more than an average librarian. Ms. Wendy, as she is referred to in our town by children and adults alike, is considered family to many of the Cardholders. When it comes to programming with the children, Wendy constantly goes above and beyond. She interacts with them in a way that is engaging and makes them want to visit and spend time at our library. For us adults, she is a shoulder to cry on, a supportive ally when you need her to help you navigate everyday life or parenting. She's a wealth of knowledge to help you find the exact book to tackle a problem at home or to read to a certain age group. I've seen Ms. Wendy problem solve with a parent to help them get the services that their family needed. She is constantly offering her assistance in our town as a point of contact to early literacy. My children have been sitting in storytime collectively for over five years. Each year when we holiday shop, they insist to purchase something small or make something for Ms. Wendy when we go looking for their grandparents' gifts. It warms my heart to know that my children feel safe and comforted in her presence. In a rural town, it's safe to say our library is the hub, and I think Ms. Wendy is certainly at the center of that hub. She is our community. Ms. Wendy has been at the Barrington Public Library for 15 years this month, hence why we're celebrating her today. Melissa? So I have been, I'm Melissa Hewitt, the director of the library, and it has been a pleasure. She is just amazing. She, um, 15 years, I've been here a year and a half, it's just unbelievable, the dedication she has to our kids. But she wears so many hats in our library, not just ones inspired by Dr. Seuss's famous characters. But she also, I mean, you're on his birthday. She picks up where I have questions and I'm unknown. She, like Lindsay said, is just amazing with our parents and our family. She heads up the genealogy club, and she's always willing to help people track their ancestors, and she really is just an amazing part of this community and can't thank you enough for being part of our library.
Well, I love being a part of the library and I feel like I belong to Barrington. It's been, I can't imagine a better job. It's, I don't know, I get a lot of hugs and feel goods and just a lot of love from our town. So I'm very fortunate to work here and I appreciate everyone that I work with and have been working with over here. It's really an amazing library, so we're very lucky in all of the staff at that library. So, thank you.
Do we have Officer Joy here? Deputy Chief. She works?
Go try, chief.
We'll be quick, thank you for having us. Hey, help start with you.
I know that.
So I just wanted to recognize Officer Tyler Carrier. Tyler just completed DRE, which is Drug Recognition Expert. It's really a significant achievement. It's a lot of time and energy. He went to Concord for a two-week training class, and then it dovetailed into Tyler having to go to Maricopa County, Arizona, for a week where he was, and he just got back. So it is a significant achievement for Tyler and the time and effort that he put into it, and he was successful. So now he's achieved that certification that's nationally accepted and recognized throughout the country. So I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for, you know, doing that. And this was all achieved through a grant, so it only cost us his hourly salary, that's it. So it's really good, and I appreciate Tyler stepping up in this time of crisis and they called it an epidemic on drugs, and Tyler is literally a drug recognition expert, so thank you so much. Gentlemen, any questions for him on HGN or HGN? Thank you.
Congratulations.
So we recently had a person who had resigned from the Advisory Budget Committee, and we're looking to make an appointment to the Advisory Budget Committee of...
Before we do that, could we just recognize the service of the two individuals that have served and are leaving a very, very detailed position that's another volunteer role, and I just wanted to recognize Brad and Dale for their hard work.
Absolutely. So appointment to the Advisory Budget Committee, how does Danin Mantrick? Looking for a vote?
Move to approve?
Second.
Aye or aye? Bailey, aye?
Article five?
Napa.
And again, thank you Dale for, and it was Dale and Brad for their time on the Budget Committee.
And I will say there is still one, this leaves one vacancy for an alternate position on the Advisory Budget Committee. If anybody knows, anybody interested, Brad is still an alternate and hopefully will be able to offer, continue to offer insight as a valuable member.
Public comment? Just a reminder, public comment is limited to 15 in section, three minutes per person. Going once? Twice? All right, moving right along. Staff reports, Administrator McCuyker.
Absolutely. So if you want to start with the minutes?
Oh, sorry. Review of minutes for May 20th. Any comments, feedback? I will assume, by the way they are, anybody have anything to be honest with?
No, I'd take a motion to approve the minutes for May 20th.
Second. Uh, Napa?
Article five?
Bailey, aye?
Aye.
Like you said, moving right along to Administrator.
Perfect, thank you. So as I've done the last couple of meetings and plan to continue without any adverse suggestions from the board, I've included most materials for the action items in the agenda and throughout, and so as usual, I can speak to any of those agenda items at the time. I will cover a few items that aren't on the agenda, just the general information section and essentially the end of my report. So I wanted to notify the board at the last Select Board meeting, the Select Board offered the Conservation Commission a proposal to split the difference of the discrepancy with the Conservation Fund. I attended the Conservation Commission meeting on Thursday, and the Conservation Commission accepted their proposal from the Select Board. So we will record those changes, and it'll be reflected in our audit this year, that as of January 1st, 2019, there's nothing owed between the Conservation Fund and the General Fund. So thank you for helping with that, and I appreciate the willingness of the Conservation Commission to participate. So at the meeting before last, I asked the Select Board to authorize the Town Lands Committee to open the forestry services bids. They have opened those bids, the town received eight, which we were very pleased about. As such, the Town Lands Committee is continuing to meet, to narrow down their recommendations to the Select Board to include reference checks and interviews, so there'll be more information forthcoming from that, but I wanted to make sure the board knew that that was underway. I wanted to ask the board during the process of hiring the municipal office administrator, it was mentioned that it might be something the board was interested in to pursue a public administration intern at some point. I just wanted to ask the board if there were any additional details that anybody would like to offer and anything specific that you'd like me to work on to bring something to the board at a future meeting sometime soon.
Go ahead, Tracy. So I would like to see you approaching the MPA program at the Garcia School at UNH just because of its close proximity to Barrington, but also my familiarity with the graduates of that program is that they've come out of school very well prepared. The other thing I would suggest is utilizing some portions of an original document for an intern from two years ago, and perhaps drafting some of the goals from that in conjunction with a number of the targeted projects that need to be accomplished.
And that was going to be one point you question that I asked, if there were specific projects that the board felt there would be good value add. In my mind, I'm thinking the compensation study, the review of the personnel plan, certainly. Are there other items that the board would think involvement of an intern would be valuable?
I was hoping there would be some work with the cemetery software and archiving.
Yes, I absolutely agree, I was going to say the same thing. Making sure the cemetery software is fully up and running is important, archiving, and then just starting to create a plan of backlog of all that documents that we have in storage, what needs to, what we can keep, what we can get rid of. And then also making sure whatever they're working on aligns with the 2019 goals that be updated, and there's probably a few items that fit in there as well.
Great, so I'll work on that and plan to bring a proposal to the board, and is it fair to assume that would be a funded position?
No, I, I would be comfortable with a small student stipend for that. The one other thing I would suggest in the process so that the intern gets a full experience is that as we are going through the budget process, we involve that intern. I'm quite certain that the person will have the technology skills for some of the things we've already suggested, but I would also like to see the intern walk away with a large amount of their own experience for the position as well.
Great.
George.
Tracy, do you have any idea what we should put down as a recommendation? Do you have a range that we should put for second?
It's been my understanding that the positions through MPA internships run anywhere from $12 to $15.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So moving on, the board had previously discussed something called limited reuse soils, so this is the roadside excavated material that we have mounding up behind the highway garage. The concern is there's, our liability insurance provider has concerns offering it to residents or commercial entities due to the unknown contaminants. The town is pursuing multiple options for testing, seeking waivers, and otherwise utilizing that material to include, like I said, a waiver process through DEFs. So we'll continue to work on that and report back to the board.
Wow, since you have more HKN than me, can you get a calculator?
A calculator?
Yep.
Yep.
So if you take a 150 feet by 150 feet, times that.
Yep.
Now times it by 30 V.I. Now divide that by 27.
Yep.
How many yards you got?
25,000.
What it costs the truck material is five bucks a yard. To handle it is three divided by bucks a yard. So this is on the rough estimate, times that by 10.
Yep.
That's what it's costing to move it.
So do we need a level one and level two ASTM study on what's in the actual material?
That's a good question.
And that's, I don't, I didn't manage to think that's a rough guess. Don't call it $1 million, just move it.
Okay.
Do we want to pursue that or?
So a level one, a phase one and phase two ASTM study is going to run about $3,500 for phase one, and how much for phase two?
It depends on what they find. You might not even need to do a phase two as long as phase one comes back clean.
So maybe our approach should be to allow the board to approve the expenditure for phase one study.
I agree.
So I would make that motion.
I would second it.
Aye or aye?
Bailey, aye?
Article five?
Napa.
I appreciate that from the board.
We look forward to working through that process and bringing the results back to the board. Just a final reminder, or not a final reminder, but final for the general information portion of my report, that the transfer station will be closed July 4th in observance of Independence Day. Wanted to notify the board of a few new hires in Barrington recently. As you know, we've had some open positions, we still have some open positions, but we've may also made some hires. Jeremy Bacon from Deerfield was hired as a full-time firefighter EMT in the town of Barrington. He started a week ago or so and very excited to have to join the team. Regina Little from Barrington joined the town clerk's office as an assistant town clerk. She joined a few weeks ago now and is settling in just fine, there's, or very well, not just fine. There's a steep learning curve and she's doing great, the town clerk is. And the final new hire has yet to start in the town of Barrington. Tiffany Cottle was selected as the municipal office administrator, set to start on June 24th. So unfortunately, as much as we've tried to keep Suzanne forever, after her two-week vacation to Europe, she's pretty confident that the retirement is in the cards.
You sure you're sure?
Sure. I've already received the county cards.
We're going back now. So Tiffany Cottle will start that, the day of the 24th. She'll be at the Select Board meeting on the 24th, and I look forward to introducing her to you all. She does know that, she's well aware. So work anniversaries included for the month of June, this is a new list, so I'll leave that there for the board's review. And that's all. Like I said, if you have additional questions to the agenda items, you have to provide additional information.
Very good. Any comments from the board right now? I didn't think Connor had.
The phone, do you need to make?
All right.
I said I'm sure that you will train her extremely well. Okay. In your limited time.
I, I've prepared deeds from the sale of tax-dipped property, and so I've got 13 deeds to be designed. The warrant for unlicensed dogs, payroll manifested on June 2nd, and two bid, they're manifested on June 5th.
Suzanne, 600 dogs that were unlicensed?
Latest number's closer to 300.
300's good.
Ross on the town clerk's office.
Fabulous. And anyone who has had a family member of the canine persuasion that has passed, please just call, and we will take you off the list. I had that experience this year, so I'd like to remind both of us that that's important.
I know it was also posted on Barrington Connections, so thank you for having Linda take care of that. I'm sorry, it's, it's on the library as well. Thank you. And I'm sure it's on our town website as well.
Absolutely.
So old business, sale of town property. One, one of the... One of the winning bidders, Daniel Broschu, has withdrawn his bid for $6,000 on that 103 lot 49. So, that would mean that of the additional bidders, there were three. The next highest bidder would have been Christina Cullen. Next in line was McNeil slash Kennedy, and then Jeff Estes. One of the questions I had, and I went back looking and it wasn't in the minutes and I didn't have record of it, was what were the, was this one of the four lots that the Town Lands Committee had advised us against selling?
If you give me one minute, I can tell you the answer to that question. I just couldn't find it anywhere in my.
And while you're looking for that, could I ask a question, Chairperson?
Absolutely.
So, we had a situation similar to this with Castle Rock. Did we return the deposit?
No, we kept the deposit.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, conversation around this?
Mr. Chair, did we have a discussion on, because we put them all up for bid, we were going to allow those properties to go to the successful bidder and not, and then next time turn around and make a notation in the bid and how we're going to cover that recommendation of turn that property over to the Road Association or give them the offer for it? I forget how we had said that, but because it was a legal bid on that, that's what I was looking for. But if that property doesn't fit into that position, then I'll just withdraw my questions so we can move on.
It was, yeah, it was an okay property.
Okay, thank you. No question.
How would the Board like to proceed?
I think we should just go ahead and take the next bidder, give the offer to the next bidder, and see if they still want to be the individual to have that piece of property.
It's my understanding of Council Rock that we retained it and did not do that, correct?
We did retain it.
Well, I'm not, oh, no, excuse me. Don't miss a step, please. No, I'm not saying anything about the retainer. I'm saying to go to the next successful bidder.
My suggestion was, in order to proceed and the manner that we proceeded when this occurred prior to this with Castle Rock, was that we retained the property and waited to put it back out again. In reference to the individual that placed a deposit for sale and has rescinded, we also did not return the deposit for that other property in order to have continuity of practice. It would be my recommendation that we not unfortunately return the post mortem.
Is there a motion? If there is, I'll second it.
That would be my motion.
Then I'll second it. I was just saying on the list to go to the second person on the list under that $6,000 bid.
So, let's start with a vote on the deposit, about retaining the deposit, since that is the first part of Tracy's motion. So, roll call vote on retaining the deposit.
Aye.
Article 5. Aye.
And then the second part was, do we, was about retaining the property and not selling it to?
So, my motion was to retain the property?
Yes, not selling it to the next bidder.
In order to have continuity of practice, I think we should retain the property until we, the time has passed where we bring forward all other town properties. That is exactly how we handled Castle Rock, was it not?
That's correct. We didn't end up, we didn't end up selling it to the next bidder.
So, I would like to have continuity of practice. So, that's my motion.
I'll second it. I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Connor would like to? I'll just offer, it was my understanding with, and not trying to dissuade your direction here, but my understanding with Castle Rock is the extenuating circumstances with the amount of funds required to upgrade the road and make it a buildable lot were a contributing factor to the town retaining it at the time until such time something was different. I don't know if that changed anything, but I just wanted to make sure that entered into the conversation.
Sue.
Doesn't change anything from me. Would you like to pursue?
Aye. Aye. Article 5.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
So, you thought that Mr. Aaron stepped out?
Yep. Lock Hill paving. Connor, would you like to elaborate on this?
I will. And then interim road agent Chief Walker will also be available to offer insight to the recommendation provided. So, the paving on Lock Hill was postponed due to the instability of the base. Our engineer offered a proposal with a variety of proposed solutions to include doing nothing and paving it and the next step up, spending about $38,000 to improve the base and extend the life of the road longer. What you have new this week is an updated budget analysis from Aaron indicating how much has been spent so far, how much we anticipate to spend with the remainder of the paving, and what it would cost to add the improvements to Lock Hill Lane and what that would leave left over. The one piece of that that I do want to make sure is clear, the last $100,000 of the paving money that we spend is in a non-lapsing account that does not lapse until December of 2020. So, we do that, structure it in that way so that we can leave money, leave paving money on the table for unforeseen circumstances throughout the balance of the year and that we don't lose that money at the end of the year. That's the first money we spend the next year and the last money we spend the year that we're in. So, the, no, that if we don't spend all the money, we have up to $100,000 to carry forward. The next new document that you have is a recommendation from the interim road agent based on his conversations with the engineers and people familiar with the subject. His recommendation is to pave the road as it stands, it's dried out, pave it, do our best to keep it up, maybe consider posting it in the season that would benefit, that would benefit the road, and make sure that there's enough left over in the paving budget to continue and cover any unforeseen circumstances in the future. And I think it'd be good to give an opportunity to speak to that further if you'd like.
Dan?
Sorry.
Today, in my observation, I took another ride up there. And the ditching hasn't been done yet on it, and there is water brought up that's all started this. And then my own personal feelings, working with other contractors, and how a year, Inc. would handle this job, looking at the circle, I would cut that down and bring it down and lose the extra material down the road. The land, you kind of go by the land, the land will allow it. So, I don't see all this extra work in the driveways and stuff personally. And, but that's my observation.
Tracy?
After reading your report from the interim road agent, it appears to me that option four, going with our original plan of reclaim and repave, is A, the most cost-effective, gives us about the same timeline as we expected to have, and that we would reintroduce the additional repair work in the next 10-year plan for this road. So, my recommendation was, would be that we follow the interim road agent's recommendation.
So, I don't know if anyone else noticed, and looking at it, when you looked at the recommendations, there was the very expensive option A, there was the less expensive, expensive option B, and then option C. And A, B, and C all gave a 20-year life expectancy with the added cost to it. But you also look at, one of the things that nobody talked about in here is if you look at when you hit the next point of road repaving or repair, you've already created a 20-year base underneath it, which means you're gonna, the next time you pave, you're already gonna have that 20-year base as opposed to going back and even doing more above and beyond that. But nobody talked in this about the benefit that's gained even longer down the way from this.
And that's all idea of the paving plan and schedule and stuff. But if it's done right, you can get 30 years early.
I mean, the engineer's calling for 20. I believe the 20 is doable based on what's there. I absolutely respect what the interim road agent has brought before us, but reading what Du Bois and King stated, is they're estimating 20. Even if we don't get that, we've now created a much better base, and if you wanted to grind it and add to it again, you could even do that and then till that in there. And now you've got an even bigger base that you've just put out there. Now, you're up to the better part of eight or nine inches. So, something to consider in that process. I know that does work the line down. Is the 794, does that include what was carried over from last year?
Yes, it does.
So, my takeaway is nothing was carried over from last year?
No.
Oh, no, nine grand. Okay, that's the 90 from the $100,000 article.
Correct.
Okay. So, is there, well, we're not ready for any motion needs. Yes, Tracy, it did, but we're still having discussion right now. Is there any other conversation that?
Ice board drainage device. And in the long run, we're saving money. And then you start here, time you arrive around 20-year cycle, start all back over again. That's all idea of a maintenance plan for paving. And I will bring that up when we revise the other one for next year.
Yep. Would Rick like to come up and make any commentary, or are you good? Any other comments?
If we deplete the budget by doing this work and we have an emergency, will we be able to react to an emergency repaving or situation should Mother Nature decide to wash out a roadway or something?
That's a million-dollar question. It depends on when it happens.
I'd like a million-dollar answer.
If it, certainly, certainly if it happened in October, November, which is the time of the year when hurricane season rolls through, when we get lots of rain, then the answer would be no, we'd be tight on the budget, we'd be looking, we'd be scratching, digging, finding places. The other thing I'd remind you is that you folks have a proposal to extend, to do a turnaround or even to put a bid up to a turnaround that sort of include paving on Wildcat Road in the day, pieces of that going to come out of what would be a $33,000 dollar balance. So, again, you know, the highway department budget is such that I don't think it's the end of the world if you can use 40 and 30, but if we've done well at the end of the year, they probably will be selling a little bit of the side of the road, hoping money can get us more coming to you folks for money out of it.
Now, asking for your opinion on what Dan had brought up, and I know you haven't necessarily had a chance to look at that about knocking down the median in there and using some of that to spread it out. I don't know how much of it is loam. I don't know how much of it is gravel, so I don't know if it's even an option, but.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer. I mean, if you saw the NPA report, that's really what I had to go by. And, you know, and again, as you see in my memo, I'm not necessarily a proponent of picking a can down the road, but I also don't believe, no disrespect to the NPA's, but I don't believe you're gonna get 20 years out of that road either. So, I think that much after 15 to 16 years, anything beyond 15 years, you're gonna look at it as a bonus. So, again, I just think that if we're in a tough spot, it's unfortunate that we didn't see the work that needed to be done before we agreed to, before we agreed to do stepping on the road, but we committed to that, so it is, that's where we're at. I've talked to a couple of local contractors that I have a lot of respect for, and I did say that I wouldn't bring them in on the public meeting, but certainly if we didn't ground that road right now and not in April, I absolutely 100% believe that this would, this whole thing would have been a zone issue to ground it now. And the water was out of there, we would have grounded and paved it. So, I'm just, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just not sure that adding six inches of material is gonna accomplish what we're looking for it to do next February, March when the frost starts coming out of the town and we're driving over it.
Dan?
Tracy, we have SB 2 down, and then over the years, I know it's years where I'm running. So, if we need money, we can find it.
Have we considered stepping outside the box here for a minute and holding off on these two areas of paving until next year and including the next year?
Which two areas are you talking about?
I think you're talking about Lock Hill and.
We've already, we've already ground Lock Hill, so actually I talked to a state engineer, and one of the things he said was, I want to hold off on paving this, and that might be okay, except we already ground it. But okay, never mind, because if we didn't pave that, I don't want to be the one answering the phone.
No, I didn't understand we had already received a report.
Okay.
And my observation today, stone, stone's going down the route.
Wow.
126?
Yeah, tied 126.
Turned through whatever it is?
Yeah.
And then soon as we had more rains, we had heavy rain, it didn't wash our elements out, we were down there, there is enough pitch to come down the hill, and then it's very hard to follow a dirt road and maintain a dirt road compared to a paved road.
Yeah, that's.
I understand.
Yeah.
So, that leaves us with two options basically. Pave it as is or add the gravel to it to raise it up on top of the bed that it already has from the grinding of the first horn and see what we get. Honestly, I'll tell you, Rick, just looking at it, one of my big concerns is I look at the roads that we've paved within the last five years, and there's a lot of alligator cracking, a lot of roads that have come apart, and I'm just afraid that we could end up with a repeat, with more repeat work by not doing the best we can to give it the longevity that we can give it as well. Connor, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I, the Board will be asked if you do support investing in the road, the two options that you have are adding the six inches of gravel or the proposal of the McAdams theory, the stone, using the washed stone and integrate that into the base. The cost difference is $3,000. $35,000 is the estimate from Du Bois and King to add six inches of gravel. $38,000 is the quote from R&amp;D to add the stone, which is the McAdams theory, which the Board has talked about previously.
Do you have a response to that, Chief?
No, because I really don't. You know, I think if you read the engineer's report, I think they have some concern that the stone was weak, right, and that the watering water. I, again, I guess from my perspective, option three or four, either one of them are viable options on this. I'm not personally convinced that you're gonna get it. But 15 years now, it's something you're worried about.
Dan?
Well, the state and every jobs around here, people, we live in the great estate. Rock works. You can use concrete or emulsion and stuff, but if you put fractured rock in there, we didn't have that years ago, it's like a puzzle. It binds itself together. With the round rocks, that's it, they have all kinds of it, they don't bind together.
So, you're suggesting a washed rock?
Or even the six inches of gravel? There's 600, I think I have math, there's 600 yards in there. So, if you put out the bid, it'd probably come under $35,000.
George?
I think we just got to look at this and do the road the best way we can and so it lasts the longest. I think that's been recommended by several Board members and from the engineers, that's the way we have to go. We should look at long-term instead of short-term on this because we've got more roads that need to be, and as you had suggested, we have all the roads that are fractured. You and I, and I've gone with Dan too, have gone around and over the last couple of years and looked at it, but it's just things that need to be fixed up. I think we should like the vote, start right now and give a balanced look at the product they need. Thank you.
Tom?
I agree. I don't think that doing a half as a job is in the best interest of the town to work or anything to do with it. It's going to be a constant complaint if you don't do it. Do it the way you should.
Dan?
This is for the future thought. If we see a road that goes bad, we can dump string stone layer top of the pavement and they can reclaim it once, done. It's all installed, blended. So then you have a 12 inch base. We didn't have the forethought, knew we had this mess on this road, but we could use it for the future too. But I believe in drainage and base. And I think we should start getting in the season, doing things right. So we have longer life out of it. So we start this new paving plan.
Yep.
Circle works.
Yeah, I believe there is a very successful plan looking, that's been discussed for next year's paving as well. So I'm happy to see that moving forward. Go ahead.
So my motion is based strictly on budget. And leaving yourself with, we have a very small contingency fund this year. And you're leaving the budget extremely small, $33,000.
We have an SB2 down, another line item. If it's a emergency, we can take that up, we add it.
Okay.
All right. So McAdam or, no, I know. McAdam or gravel?
That's a $3,000 question.
Did you make, fully make a motion?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so is there a second to Tracy's motion?
What were the motions? Let's take the recommendation of the interim road agent and not spend the money?
No second.
No second right now, unless you're seconding. Oh, no, no, no.
This time I disagree with her.
So the question, so this is what makes the board work?
Yeah.
So the question is, is would the board prefer to gravel or stone? Dan?
All right. On, either way, whether it be for a contract, anyone can bid the gravel. If we do the McAdam, we're limited to R and D. Or some, because they get the bid.
So what's your recommendation?
Um, it's up to you guys, either way, I'm just saying.
Dan?
Yeah.
You're the guy that has pushed the hardest for this.
So what's your recommendation?
So what would you, which way would you do it?
Are we getting the same life out of either situation? More than it costs $5,000 less?
Is the stone better than the gravel? Or is it the same?
Yeah, the same outcome. Six inches, if you do a spec gravel or six inches one, if washed, you're going to have the same outcome.
Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay. So are you making, are you making a motion to do blending, to do gravel? And then pave the road over it? I'll make a motion for six inches of gravel and then to pave the road after we've applied six inches of gravel.
That's $3,000 cheaper roughly, or maybe more. No, second.
Thank you. Okay, now bye.
Hard copy, man.
Hey, Eli.
Hey, Ryan. Okay.
So my question, just my clarification, are we, are we having R and D proceed with putting six inches of gravel up before they pave it?
Dan?
It changes all the bid scopes and stuff. So. It takes too long for it out the bid, but see what R and D will do it. But we need to get it done because that road, that road's liable right now. I drove on it, so it's going right now.
Okay.
Didn't we get this quote with each of the paving? Didn't we already?
Not for the added gravel and stone.
So, because if we look, if we look at the handouts we just received over the last few weeks, it shows in their recommendations and how we should consider changing the bids for paving for next year.
Right.
You know, we, right now, we can't do too much. We sure as hell go off for next year.
All right. Can we clarify this whole thing? Because I think we're going to get ourselves in a bind. Since R and D's got the bid, we got a price, and it's $3,000 difference. While there's the McAdam theory, likes bid, so we're following all the bids and stuff. Because right now, the director did, the engineers came up with $35,000. And we have no, we didn't go through the bid process on that. So technically, the price should go back. Would you revise your motion to the McAdam so we all, folks who are following all the bid specs?
What's that person there saying is that because the bid for the paving already included a bid price for the McAdams theory, it sounds like he feels comfortable using that, not going back up to bid, using R and D that way, because we already solicited bids from all the respondents.
All right, we know the time, we need to act on this.
So, so I will withdraw my motion that I had made. Would you withdraw your second, Dan?
Yes, yes.
Stone and sand.
So I will make a motion, again, to apply stone as opposed to gravel, following the McAdam theory, to lay that to the road and then pave the road after.
I'll second that.
If, if I may, I'm trying to be, if I'm wrong, but I think that $38,000 quote came from R and D after our engineer asked them for a quote. So it didn't go up the bid, unless I'm wrong. And I believe our, I believe our engineer contacted R and D and said, okay, we've got this road, we want to do six inches of gravel, McAdam theory, what's the cost? So that's really not a bid, that was an estimate.
Right.
To be the word.
They extended the $10 a square yard quote that they gave us in their bid spec for the specific.
I think all the data goes back to the, okay, bid.
And it just added the handwork for the driveways.
All right, thank you.
Now, I.
Hard copy, man.
Hey, Eli.
Hey, Ryan.
All righty.
I think it's clear because we won't get ourselves in trouble this way. That is already presented.
I would be very interested to follow this road.
So.
It's tough if it doesn't rain tonight.
So.
$38,000 per house.
Go ahead.
A couple of clarification. Do you want us to contact R and D tomorrow and have a move forward? Do you want us to, do we have to, do you want us to look at the issue before we have them come in? Do you express a?
Yeah, well, yeah, it would be bad if it was bad. Because they can hopefully fix all the culvert and then the drainage stuff.
And I'm assuming it's probably going to take them a few days to get prepared to do this. They're not going to be able to do that like tomorrow.
I don't know the answer to that. I, Aaron, no idea. Then I, Aaron, I think weather permitting, but it looks like it'll rain for most of the day tomorrow. But I thought weather permitting, we got all the work finished up on Meadow Brook. So they were going to, they were going to pave Meadow Brook and step in stone, I believe tomorrow. But that may push them off a day. So let me see what I can do, quote, Lock Hill. I think maybe some of the things they wanted to be found and just have that one road left to do, but they weren't for us.
And I believe now with rain, they can pave it in, like, really light rain, but they can't pave it in anything that's substantive, if I'm correct.
Binder. You put down binder, you can get away with it. It turns them down. If it's raining and stuff, the ground, ground soaks it up and out. But it just can't be downboring because then you lose texture too fast and then you, it easily turns to mud. So if you rain that high, you can't put down binder. But you can't out of top go.
Right.
Right. I'll, I'll check with them tomorrow. We'll try to buy enough time to get the work done.
Thank you. Don't, don't run away because the road study update for 2020's paving projects is next.
And I can take most of that, and Rick can jump in. So the, the original 2011 DuBois and King road study extended out to 2018. We did discuss at this table, pursuing options for road study for the future. You'll remember that the road agent back during the budget process presented some proposals from DuBois and King to update the road study moving forward to include employing technology, LiDAR technology with StreetScan to have another source of data to make the recommendation and put together a road study for the town of Barrington. So we are moving forward. We have the original, the updated proposal from StreetScan. I have a conversation set up with DuBois and King to talk about what a full recommendation road study would be from DuBois and King. That said, this is a road study which would be implemented in 2020 for road projects, paving projects, starting in 2021. So where that leaves us this year, and the meeting that the interim road agent, myself and the highway department had, was focusing on what are our road projects for next year? So the, the folks over in that department put together a fairly comprehensive list of where they saw priorities, what work needed to be done on those road priorities this year, preparing for paving for next year. So the conversation for the board is, we're working on that list and we hope to have approval from the board on that list, maybe as soon as next meeting. So the folks in that department can focus on the culvert work, the ditching, et cetera, preparing for next year. The question to you is, do you have input? One, and two, would you like us to involve the engineer, invest in involving the engineer specifically for a road list for next year? Or would you like to use the institutional knowledge that we have and focus our time and attention with the engineer on the road study for the future?
Dan?
I don't know, over the years, I would pass, slip. But Chesley Drive, Swain, and there's one other town that only had binder down, there's never top coated. And Swain was done in 2010, I think. So we're talking eight years ago, and there's never been a top coated on the break. And now it's ruined, so we need to start over. And then that leads.
Chesley Drive, and there's one more. They might be connected, this way, I don't know.
Right under the green numbers, chief. You were there.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Can hear again. So.
And then maybe the average two, I don't know.
What would it take to compile a list of the roads in town when they were last paved? Like, looking at the window of when they're paved from one period in time to another? And then what's still outstanding?
That's what we.
Condition that they're in is.
Sorry to interrupt. That's what we hope to accomplish with updating the road study, compiling that information. And I don't want to, my intent is not to rush that process so it isn't a complete process. And so that's why I'm treating this two separate things and focus on 2020, get the work done we need to. And then, like I said, give the time and attention to the road study that it deserves.
There is a spreadsheet, because that's how I get my dates and stuff. I've seen a spreadsheet.
Which is from the original, the original road study that was done, but it's not.
No, I think there's another one too, that, that they, was given those for information.
So I can check with Aaron tomorrow. Aaron has some stuff on the computer and she's been trying to maintain when roads are paved and worked and done. So that might be a case she might be able to, I'm just, I'm the fish out of water because I haven't talked to her about it. But if, I'm assuming she probably could print some type of a report off that so we could get a good part of the information you're looking for, at least her, as long as she can.
Tracy, it's been my understanding and listening to all of you that when roads were paved is less important than the current condition of them. So to have the highway department go back and do that research project, what information will we derive from that?
What we'll gain out of it is the assessment of the condition of the road. So you, like you said, you may have a road that was paved recently that's in poor condition, which we'll be able to assess based on that. And then you may have a road that's been quite a while, that is in perfectly good condition and maybe not necessarily in need quite yet of that.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. Dan?
Asphalt does dry out and stuff, and there's show fatigue from weather, salt and sand. So that's why the wear course is finer, seals it up better and stuff. So by skipping, by, by jumping around and not following the plan over the years, they bypass a couple of roads. So now you start back to square one. That's why when you start the study, in 20 years, you make a circle, you start picking them like that. Granted, there might be other roads that come out that's on the road for next year that might be dying in this year. So then you just swap them.
Right.
So you need to have some of a game plan.
So if I may, what I've heard a little bit tonight, and certainly I appreciate the fact that you want to make an investment in the infrastructure of our town to make sure that when we spend the money for paving, that we're, that we're putting a good product down and getting the best of the product dollar. But I'll just caution you that the previous road agent, dealing with a number of boards over the years, this really all comes down to money. And it's, it's nice to sit here and say that we want to do this. But what really has to happen is, is we get into the budget process, the five of you have to be in a position to say that, you know, this is where we're going to invest our money. And that's, you know, obviously is a pretty tough thing to do because there's all of us fighting for a piece of that dollar. So I just, I don't want you guys to lose sight of the fact that you can stand there and say that, you know, that we can only do as good a job on a road is what the town's willing to invest in making the repairs. And Lock Hill Lane's a perfect example of it. If you, if you do what the engineer says and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, we can have a super highway up there. And again, it comes back to, is that, we only, there's only so much pie. And what's the best way to divvy that out? And obviously, the roads that are getting, the Hall Roads and the Beauty Hill Roads and the Young Roads and Green Hill and Toll Land and Second Crown Point and Pond Hill, these roads that are, that are getting high traffic comes on a daily basis, take the lion's share of our money. So again, I would just caution you to remember during the budget process that, you know, we have, what you give the highway department, just like what you gave Peter the previous years, he has to stretch that as far as he can. And sometimes you're, sometimes you're making decisions to try to stretch that all a little further and get done what we need. So, you know, it, like I say, it's all well and fine to sit here and say, we're going to make the investment. But during budget time, you either get a turn and say, we're going to make an investment and do less road, but we're going to do this, we're going to put more money in the pot. That, that plan you're looking at called for a million dollars. In 2000, whatever it was, 2002 or '03, when that was put together, it called for over a million dollars. Here we are at the end of this plan, and we never got to that million dollars. And Peter, Peter mentioned that every year during the budget process that we, as a community, you know, I get it. It's hard to put a million dollars up into paving and infrastructure. But, you know, we were doing, we were missing by that $400 million every year. So it's hard to put that second code on. When we put that, when we put the top code in, I don't just do a dance, when you put the top code on, that means something else doesn't get.
The, the great part to speak to that is the great part about having your road list prepared in advance and looking at where you are, is you can create a really good estimate as to what you need to go spend the next year. So we can be prepared as best as we can to say, yeah, we're going to go forward with all our roads, or no, we're not going to go forward with all our roads, or hey, we're going to go ask the people of this town for more money.
And, and again, I, I don't disagree with that. And I think that if you're going to, if you're going to, I mean, that plan's at the end of the line right now. And you, at some point, you're going to be asked to make a decision on do you want to redo the plan? Do you want them to do a study? And maybe, maybe you're coming back and saying, here's a realistic goal of how much money we're going, we're willing to put up in the budget process to do this. And if we're not going to put a million dollars, if the three quarters of a million dollars is the number, then to me, that's what you're telling the engineer. You've got three quarters of a million dollars, so don't, don't give us 15 roads a year if we really can only afford to do eight.
I would agree with you perhaps. Dan?
Every action is a reaction. And we do our roads with the base, drainage and stuff. We're going to save money on plowing and treating them.
Yep.
So in the long run, we spend money now, but we have savings and better in the long run. And we have longer life out of them, and that adds up.
I, I don't disagree, but for years, and I'm going to stick up for the previous road agent, for years, he stood here right where I am and said, you got to put the money in. And when the five of you up here, which is that's what you're, that's what you're tasked with doing, is saying, you get this much money to do your job. with doing, is saying, you get this much money to do your job, then the department had worked, and then the numbers you give them. So again, that's kind of the, I think we're all agreeing on the same thing. We either, you know, let's put a plan together with, let's the five of you sit down and tell Connor, this is, this is the money we're willing to spend, and let's build a plan on that.
Thank you, Rick. Okay. So what I'll do, just to get the good advice from the board, is I'll give you the, just run through the list. Malago is one of the lists that, when roads have floated to the top. Pasture Hill, a top coat on all of the roads paved this year. Commerce Way is a road in need of improvement, maybe considering concrete injection. So can we put this all together, and rather than just having a general discussion on it, and then... So the only question I have for the board is, this is the direction that we're headed. Would you like us to involve the engineer, or would you like us to present a list from the interim road agent, the highway department, and have you review it then, before or after an engineer? Personally, my feeling on it is, before we go spending money on an engineer, let's look at what we have with you folks, and then we'll go from there. How does the board feel about that?
I agree. And I have another comment that you brought up, Malago. Culverts?
Yes.
Right next to where they're doing the work, the line where they're doing the bridge work, there's a culvert right behind, next to it. I don't know if the bridge works on extend up further to Pasture Lane, but that house right on the corner, that culvert needs to be replaced, or go right to our...
Dan, just to, I hate piggybacking on what someone's saying, but just to hop in on that, if you look at where they've saw cut, saw cut Malago to carry it on, it's alligator cracked and rippled pretty badly for about another 50 to 100 yards.
And that's where the culvert is, too.
It may be worth actually even talking with them about extending that work, that 100 yards, to fix that.
So there's, there's a couple of things. I think that changes the bridge project, because I think that's where that is. The other side of that is, is obviously Peter had in the plan to do Malago, and I talked to him a week or so ago, but, and he would have done Malago a couple of years ago, but knowing that we were going to do the culvert, he said it made sense to wait until it is done. So that road was slated to be ground, we got to do some, we got to do some underdrain work on a couple of spots down there. We talked to a property, a mother of both, putting a cross culvert in. He's not interested in that, because he doesn't want the negative impact it's going to have on his property. So we're going to have to go to a Plan B, which is some underdrain that will absorb some of that water, the dirt, high water, things that can kind of reach back into the ground. They call it a French drain. We have a couple of them on that road. But again, in a perfect world, that property owner didn't allow us to put some cross culvert in, but we're aware of that. I think the thought process is, where the bridge work stops, we would probably, when that's ground, we'd probably add six or eight inches of gravel in from there back to around Pasture Hill Road, so it doesn't create a problem there. So that's the plan for next year.
Tracy, it's my understanding that Pasture Hill Road culvert has never overflowed onto Malago Road.
It's not, it's a driveway next to it.
The, there were a couple of times where, that were during the Mother's Day flood, and there have been a couple of times, but I, I believe, but certainly haven't spoken to me, I believe that the changing of the box, going to the box culvert there and stuff, there's going to be less of a concern for flooding in the road. Little bit of history, I was talking to the old fire chief, and he asked about replacing it, and he says, it's kind of funny, back when there was the bridge across there, he says, the brook ran parallel to the road, and they decided when they put that culvert in, in the early seventies, that by putting that culvert in on an angle rather than perpendicular to the road, that it would move the water more. But here we are, 40, 50 years later, and now we're going to straighten the brook back up.
Back to the way it was.
So, but that is, Malago Road is, is one of the roads that, that is slated to work on this fall, late summer, early fall, to be prepared for a ride and repave next year.
Forgive me for sounding insensitive on this, because it will sound insensitive. When we, when we talk to an abutting owner, I'm assuming that's more out of courtesy than out of town necessity?
No, because, well, you, you don't have, you really don't have a way to take your nest and put it on somebody else's property, so it would be an eminent domain kind of thing, and it would probably, if that abutte were able, were able to prove that the town was going to drastically reduce the value of that individual's property, then there's probably a greater chance the town wouldn't be able to afford to do the job anyway, because a judge would likely require the town to pay what...
The difference in whatever the value. So I'll put together the information before having, involving the engineer and have it at the next meeting for the board to review.
Thank you.
Stripping contract. There was a change in the stripping contact due to the price of purchasing industrial yellow white paint from China. They had to up their price. Tracy?
Based on the proposal that we were given and we signed for, the very first line, all materials guaranteed to be specified, the 2% increase to the proposal, and while I sympathize with industrial traffic lines, I'm of the opinion that unfortunately, they need to absorb the loss of profit.
That conversation was had with the contractor. They were unwilling to hold the price that they originally quoted, and the new proposal, the new contract that they proposed is $630 more expensive, and it is about $550 cheaper than the next lowest bid. Just in general comment on that, it says the proposal may be withdrawn if not accepted within 30 days. Well, we did accept it within 30 days, so... So we reviewed the contract documents, and there was nothing that we could hold them to their contract in our bid or in their contract documents.
Have we contacted the next bidder and asked them if they'd match the price?
We contacted the next bidder and see if, to see if they would hold their price, and they would. We did not ask about them matching the price. I don't believe that's...
And the cost difference with the next bidder would be $500 or...
$538.
More about the efforts.
Hold on, if we hold off, we'll be emotional.
I'm sorry, what's that, Dan?
They restarted work, and they were shut down. Thanks, thank you. So if they come back, they still come back after us, right?
So to be clear, what's LeFerson Air's talking about, during the discussion of changing the contract, the industrial traffic lines was notified that the board would meet on the 10th and review their altered contract. They showed up in town to start the work. They felt like since the, the price change was for the yellow paint, that they could start the white paint. I notified the contractor that the bid was awarded in total, not in part, and that if they weren't able to honor the price of the original contract, that they would have to cease work in Barrington until the board can review the updated project, unless they could honor the price. They decided that they would leave Barrington and wait for the board to review the contract price. So they did start work in Barrington and were asked to leave if they couldn't honor the original price. George?
What costs did they charge us?
Well, there's a price on stop bars and lines up there, too, so it's going to be fed up.
Connor, how much money did they charge us so far? What did they want to charge us?
They have not charged us anything so far, and my position is that the signed contract that they would have been working on, the only agreement that existed was the price that they offered us. And they, their new proposal was a new price, and if, again, the explanation that I gave is this is a contract that's awarded in total. It wouldn't be fair to offer a portion of the contract to a different contractor, because one portion of the price was different. And so I made that clear in explaining that if they couldn't honor the full total price, that they would have to wait for the board to review. As for the work that was done, it's my position that if the board were to use a separate contractor, that the, the work, they weren't authorized to do the work based on the new contract that they proposed. So they provided, they voluntarily painted some of our roads for us? That will depend on the decision the board makes.
Well, lawyers will get involved.
How much has been painted, do we know?
No, I don't know, that's what's...
They did some of the handwork, so they paved a fair amount of stop bar, or, excuse me, painted a fair amount of stop bars in town, and the public safety building has about a quarter of the parking lines.
Well, I tell you, Mr. Chairman, I looked at this over, and I really think that, sorry, but I think we should go to the next bidder and have that $550. It's not emotions, it's disgusting. I think $550 on this is a way to go. The other people are willing to absorb the quote Chinese increase in price, so that's my feelings.
Well, we were making very clear that if they won't match price, we're going to go to the other people who's up in there, and he, he does something, but we're going to have legal fees. I feel.
Tracy? So if we can define what they've already completed, we can approach the second bidder and reduce the proposal from that company by the amount of stop bars and parking stalls.
I disagree.
But this, this is a matter of principle. You cannot put a bid out, respond to an RFP with a price, and then come back after you start the work and hold us hostage for another 2% of the price. It's completely unethical.
I know, but all I'm saying, we can't use the second bidder. If I was the second bidder on the job, you ask me to come in there and take it out of that price? Because I don't think so. I'm not going to do all, all the job of that. Basically, they had new work rented, so they got to honor their price over the next bidder, and they eat everything. And then we get the, we get the rest of the stop bars painted over again, twice.
Chief Walker?
I was, I was actually going to agree with LeFerson Air, that I think it makes sense that, based on your decision tonight, if you choose to go with the second bidder, my recommendation would be is that you go back to them and say, look, you, you made the original bid, we will honor the original bid and pay you to do it for that if not, we're going to lose the second. I think you give them the chance to back up and do what they said.
Am I mistaken? Didn't we talk about that?
The difference, I think, that Chief Walker's explaining is if by decision of the board tonight, you authorize me to give industrial one last chance to honor the original contract price before we go to the second bidder, the stakes are a little different for them than saying, honor your price, or it's going to go to the board.
But did, my question is, you just said a second chance, did, were they told on a first chance, either Fisher Cut paid?
They, they were asked if they would honor their original contract price, and they said, no, the price has changed.
I would just say...
That would be enough for me.
I, the only reason I'm leaning toward you would say that, you know, the board has said that either honor the original price, or we're going to, as a matter of principle, we'll go to the second bidder. I, I just questioned whether it helps us legally, if we said, hey, we extended it, we, you know, I think part of the thing is, is that we looked at this, and I'm certainly not a legal mind, I read the contract, and I didn't see on there that there was no ability for them to, you know, to, if the price went up or an increase out of their control, there was nothing on it to say they couldn't, but there was also nothing, I didn't see anything on either side of it, I guess is the right way to put it. And I think it made it, at least in my mind, and Connor and I had a conversation about this, that moving forward from a town perspective is that we'll change the language on all of our requests for proposals in quotes, to make sure it's some pretty clear language that this is, you know, that there is no help for either side.
The price is guaranteed, right?
But again, I didn't see it in their quote, and I didn't see it in our, our P that doesn't say that they couldn't do that.
Says all material, material, which is what they're charging us more money for, is guaranteed as specified, specified with price.
Dan, agree. George?
Tracy's already agreed, what else do I have to ask to have? We followed the law when we put up for bidding, we said we're going to do X, and we want this type of product put back down on the road, and we also gave them 30 days on the end to Fisher Cut pay. They, they turned around and they, they signed the contract with us, and then after the 30 day period, oh, by the way, we want to have an additional amount of money. That's not keeping with the contract. And I understand what Dan is saying about according for legal, but the legal price was they exceeded the 30 days. And consequently, if they're trying, I call it price gouging, but that price gouging, but maybe it's something else. I don't feel that, you know, anyway, I don't feel we should pay the damn money, but voters gave us the authority, so we got five of us here, you take five votes.
So I'll make a motion to give them a final opportunity to match their original price as specified, and if not, then we proceed to the next highest bidder.
And what will work rented?
They eat it.
I agree.
They, they chose to come do work when we did not...
Yeah, I agree, their second...
When we have, when we did not provide them authorization to move forward.
At a higher price.
Right.
We provided them authorization to finish a job at this price.
They're right.
They really are.
Article I.
Now, I... I would also like to make a note to request that in, that this gets noted in the file for bidding in the future, that we did have this problem with them moving forward, so it's something we consider with when folks bid the contract next year. Absolutely, I'll keep the board informed.
Is New Hampshire Municipal Association people list offenders that they work with in any type of situation like this that comes up with the municipality?
I'm not aware of that, that level of information available. There may be something with one of the Public Works Net listservs that supports Public Works and Highway Department.
I just picture, if you're a third of the way through this and the price goes up again, are we going to come back at this again? It's completely inappropriate.
George first.
I was going to ask that maybe Connor could just send a quick blow up tomorrow for Tracy's information and ask them if they do have that. I would suspect very strongly that they would do, because that's what we pay for, right? I'm sure it would help us.
And most paving contracts have a disclaimer at the bottom. It goes up, state sets are, ready on bulk, all by the pound for asphalt, so when that changes, then just because you bid something, you will get hit with a cost difference. A lot of people don't pay attention to the last line.
Building Committee expectations and timeline. Connor, would you like to check with everyone about this? I know I'm on the committee, but I will let you... Yeah, happy to. So the building committee had its first meeting on May 29th. It was a very successful meeting and productive. We set a good task list for our next meeting, which is this Wednesday. One of the conversations that the board had in seeking and collecting information to guide the committee was giving the board an opportunity to discuss and make any expectations clear of the building committee going into the process. Obviously, the board developed the Town Hall Building Committee chart, which outlines pretty specifically what the board intends the committee to focus on, but if there are any other expectations that the board has for this committee, the board would, or the Town Hall Building Committee would like the board to submit those, so they can consider it throughout the process. The other thing that the committee asked the board to offer was any expected timeline. So as I explained to the committee, I explained where we are in the process and what we anticipate moving forward on that log. The, I don't have an anticipated timeline for the building committee deadlines for preparing an RFP and submitting. If the board, if anybody at this table has expectations for a timeline, I'd like to bring that back to the building committee, so they can use that as a goal and a guide. One thing I would like to request of the board at this time is that, there were currently two alternate members that were on the board. I'd like to make a motion that everybody that is on the board be considered a full member.
I'll second that.
Who are the two alternates?
It would be George and Casey O'Brien.
We've already nominated Casey as the chairperson. You've already nominated Casey as the chairperson as an alternate?
He was nominated as an alternate, but he's the only one who was willing to chair the committee.
Ah? Well, then I see that we have a conundrum.
So we rectify that conundrum.
I would second that, then.
Dan had already seconded it.
Oh.
So...
Aye. Aye.
Protocol aye.
Naff aye.
All right. I'll make sure the town clerk is aware.
So in reference to the committee charge, I don't see in the meeting minutes that there's been any discussion about energy efficient technology.
That was what, really what the Building Committee was looking for is what would the, would the select board have some parameters that they would like to set for how we proceed?
So, I'm of the opinion that energy efficiency is important and that at this current time the opportunity may exist to even go with solar energy for the facility.
I like commenting on that.
And so this particular select person is interested in building a town hall that is as energy efficient as possible and uses any green energy source that's possibly available at that location.
So, hold on one second. So when we talk about energy efficiency, is it purely from an electrical standpoint or is this something that we're looking at from, from a water, from a heat, from an electric...
We're a water community, fortunately, but I was thinking from a heat loss perspective and from perspective.
Going along with that, Mr. Chairman, you know, you and I have had the same conversation about ICF, so, you know, if you do it that way there, that would work out very well. Also, we'll put that on the charge.
Dan?
On the solar, they're getting off roofs, putting them on the ground. If you go down 125, like Fort Kingston, and it's a fire department or a town hall, they got all the law...
The police and fire department of Brentwood. They have a solar farm right on 125 from Brentwood.
Right. And I, the rural quaint Barrington, I don't think that would fit into our character because if I set back the town hall and blend it into the woods and all the trees and surrounding hills and towers around it, I don't think solar would be the greatest spot right there.
Well, you'd have to have an assessment done, but that is part of the process.
I would, the outcome of solar, for looks, I think would take away from the town hall personally.
I'm of the opinion you could do a design build and potentially place the panels on a roofing if the design build incorporated that. But you did bring up another good point, select person here, and that is that the residents of this town have expressed over and over and over again how they prefer the rural character of our town. So if the town hall is viewable, I would be of the opinion that a rural facade as opposed to a modern facade on the building would probably be preferred by most of the residents if it is viewable from 125.
So we've been, hang on one second. So I have to look, and energy efficiency is key topics.
Solar quote.
That's part of energy efficiency, yes. George?
To satisfy everybody, I would say the board should consider the fact is that we should put the solar energy as an alternate. That way there we can see what the price is, then we can turn around and go, so when the bid specs go up, we can turn around and do that because whoever's the successful bidder is gonna have to show us what they're gonna have, and if it's something that's, that really stinks, we just don't accept it. We turn around, give it all, the alternative to change it so it can fit in with the rural character that we have here. Yeah? If we had the building facing one way and we could do it on the other, and put everything on the other side so it doesn't show up from the road, now it's out of the way. So, then what she's, I, you know, so, it takes care of what Dan's asking and what Tracy's asking.
Something else to keep in mind on that too is when you look at the use of the sun and concrete and the absorption of sun into a building as to how it reflects out to heat in a winter month, that is another thing. How do you, how do you position an annual building to best utilize the, the sun as a heat sorcerer and your concrete inside as a heat sink? Dan?
I know, here's a suggestion, it's, we have no real place hanging plaques, whatever. I don't know how the building would come out, but if you had the main building here, then you had a long hallway with glass panels and then windows separated. So when you walk out, there'd be a wall where you hang up different pictures like the old town hall and stuff like that. And that would be like a sunroom into the building and then there's a thermal break. And then you could put big concrete, whatever, so it absorbed, the sun would absorb the heat in it and it would rabie into the night. That's up the building company, that's just a suggestion.
So we have energy efficiency, rural facade. Tracy?
So the one other thing I'd bring up is there was a very terrible and unfortunate incident in Virginia Beach over the last 10 days or so, and I think the safety of our personnel in our town hall is extremely important. And so I would like to be certain that as we're going about this build, that we keep that in mind. It's a very different world, I think, that we're living in right now.
So, George?
I would just like to piggyback on Tracy just saying for the, I have a tremendous security alarm system in that building. Because the security system would give you the power to lock it down from the central point and everything else, so that should be something that the Building Committee could consider while we consider going in for a bid.
So we have energy efficiency, the rural facade, safety of the facility, is there anything else around character and/or infrastructure that we're not thinking about or that we should be thinking about here? Connor, is there anything you would like to chime in on?
No, I think those are, I think that's exactly what the committee's looking for, for recommendations to consider.
So we'll start really with those three key items of energy efficiency, rural facade, and then safety.
Safety.
Coming from the former safety guy.
And just so the board's aware, the committee has also made a request of department heads both in the town hall and outside the town hall for recommendations. I've compiled a lot of recommendations from that group of people, and so the committee's focused right now on collecting information from stakeholders and making sure that's a consideration throughout the process.
How does the board feel, something just as we talked about, one-story building, two-story building? My personal feeling is one-story. I don't know how...
Agreed.
One?
One would fit into everything and make it a lot easier for ADA.
Absolutely.
So we do one-story facility. Any specifics on materials besides, I know George had mentioned ICF. Dan?
I would consider a basement, hungry for storage.
That changes your whole loading of the structure.
It could be a little warm.
You have to remember that with technology, we're going to be retaining a lot of our records using technology as opposed to large volumes of paper over time.
I mean, it evolves, I don't really see...
But again...
So one of the pieces that we had also talked about, just so you folks are aware from the Building Committee end, is when you look at the build out of space, is you have your functional usable space that you might be building at between $75 and $200 a square foot, depending on what you're trying to build. Storage space, you don't want to pay $200 a square foot for storage space. You wanna, you wanna build really low-cost storage space that just meets the needs of storage space. So, just so everyone's aware that we were talking about that.
Anything today is one, where you can get your office supplies delivered 12 hours after you order them, there's not a lot of need for the same closets that you used to have and the technology storage of materials.
Agreed.
Years ago, we used to have the whole basement for supplies, or once a year, and delivered.
No longer.
So, anything else besides the one-story? Any other material-specific items that the board has their hearts set on besides the rural facade?
Well, I, I think that parking really needs to be considered in conjunction with the building so that, you know, we have our rather users that'll be, then we also have a parking area for those that provide the service also, so that the two won't, so the two will be able to coexist, so to speak. That's what I'm looking at. You know what I'm saying? So instead of the, everybody parking in front of the front door, now they can turn around and park somewhere else and do the front door clear. It's not, it doesn't happen here, but it just, it just could happen over the years, so that would be a way of...
So you want access to the building for employees or another...
Employees and, and the users, except, yeah.
It's probably helpful for a means of egress too during any type of fire.
Something else that was, just an item I had thought of, that I actually had spoken with a person who works on my staff about was landscaping and putting in, using native natural floral that comes back year after year, so it minimizes your, your maintenance impact of your property, yet is great for the pollinators and other species in and around the area.
Since it's concrete, retroalimented.
Thank you, George.
All right. We'll take that to the committee. Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, there is another committee meeting Wednesday morning, Wednesday morning, 7:30.
Town Hall.
Yes. All right. Moving right along into new business, unlicensed dog forfeitures.
Right, so every year, the town clerk is required by state statute RSA 466, section 14, to ask the select board to issue a warrant between June 1st and June 20th for unlicensed dogs. This warrant is issued to the police department for, to pursue civil forfeiture. So we have that document for signature by the board tonight to issue that warrant. Once letters are printed, dog, so the letters will be printed probably June 24th and submitted to the police department to send out certified mail. Once those letters are printed, the dog owners will be charged for all fees of the certified mailing and of the process. The deadline to, to register dogs is the end of April, so June 24th when the letters go out, any, or the letters are printed, I should say, any dog that isn't registered at that point, once the letters are printed, will pay all fees for the certified mailing as they go to the police department and prepare to be sent out certified mail.
And you're collecting all the dogs that are for it?
No kidding. You want to send them down to the chair of the select board's house?
Yeah.
Custom.
I was gonna say, I give you mine, but I figure you may actually take it, so. And I don't want to give one.
So they're paying the registration fee, they're paying the certified mail fee, and they're paying what amount for the printing of the letter, stuffing of the letter, sealing of the letter? There's cost involved to us for having to prep this?
The cost, their fees cover our costs and the statute limits what we can charge for fees.
And how much is that?
I think the, I'd have to pull it back up, but there's, I seem to remember there's something about $7. I can give you that information as a piece of information for the next meeting.
So it's going to cost people 14, almost 21 or more dollars because these 300 people have not registered their dogs?
I'm looking to the chief. The chief might be familiar with what it costs somebody by the time it gets to court.
We wind up issuing a summons if they don't comply with the certified mail, so on top of the fees that you've just spoke of, if it goes to the point of a summons, you're actually receiving a summons to court and paying much higher fine than the fees incurred.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll start off with, and I'll be quick, the dogs, the dogs, the dogs. Please register your dog. So I know it's $7.25 per certified letter. I specifically budget a postage line just for this, and then we do bill that to the dog owner.
And the dollar late fee?
Yes, there's a late fee. At the end of it, it could be upwards of $50 to $60.
Okay.
That's the range, you know, when it's all said and done. And it starts off, I think it's $7, as long as the dog is rabies shot. And it is important, we follow the law, and that's all we're doing, 17 pages of law, and we just, we're following that process.
Okay. And just so I understand, so we have the registration process, we've posted on social media, we've posted on our websites, have we done anything in a non-certified capacity prior to this to alert them one more time that on the 24th, they're going to be billed significantly more money?
A change of practice for the town clerk this year was to specifically target folks when they come in to register their vehicles. Unfortunately, state law does not allow you to register your dog any more than January of the year that they're due for registration in April. Ideally, the law would change and allow you to register the dog at the same time you register your car. But what the town clerk has been doing as a change of practice this year is targeting folks when they register their vehicle, giving them the information that they need to register their dogs, or certainly since January, registering their dogs. And that has led to a reduction in the amount of folks on this list, but there isn't, there hasn't been any practice and there isn't any plan to send out a mailing at $0.50 apiece to folks as a courtesy.
Well, this is unfortunate. I guess anyone who's watching the select board meeting tonight who hasn't registered their dog should...
Or if someone, anyone knows someone who hasn't registered their dog, please remind them.
So the board is asked to make a motion and take a vote to issue this warrant to the police department, and you'll seal it with your signature later this meeting.
So moved.
Are you seconding Dan?
Yeah, and then my neighbor called in.
Okay.
We don't like them.
I don't like this one. Believe me, I feel like this is a government overstepping at its finest, but naff aye.
Protocol aye.
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 Yeah. Contact your state legislatures.
But, you know, Mr. Chairman, if some people that have failed to have their dog registered, you have to ask yourself, have they got the dog protected with rabies? Also, you know, it's gonna protect other people, so, you know, so I don't think the government's overstepping. That's all I'm here for. Thank you.
I feel it can be done in a different way. So town clerk's request for waiver deposit policy under section three, we specifically talk about deposit policy limits for the town clerk's office to $300. They're requesting a change so that they have $100 per drawer for their fourth drawer so that they're at $400.
Just until December of 2020.
It is. My suggestion is, I know we just approved this policy, but amend the policy to just say that we will have $100 per staff member at all times. That way, whether we have two staff or four staff, we either have $200, $400, whatever we need for however, whoever we have for staff as...
I'd second that motion.
Thank you.
Aye.
Protocol aye.
Naff aye.
I'll make the necessary changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Primex Contribution Assurance Program cap, three-year contract, you want...
I will. So this is a proposal, a lot of communities have been pursuing this with Primex, our insurance and liability carrier. Essentially, what this does is this, just by agreeing the trade-off, the town lets the, lets Primex know that we'll use Primex for liability, the insurance, liability and property insurance for the next three years as a trade-off for that three-year commitment. Primex is willing to offer the town that the, our rates will not increase more than 9% each year. The one reason that this is really valuable for the town right now is we're building a town hall next year, and that will increase our property, property insurance premiums, but that's included in the 9% cap. So a new facility would, is estimated to increase the town's liability insurance premium 10 to 15%. It would be capped at 9% if we were in this agreement. If it doesn't, if, again, it's a risk pool, so the rates are determined, and if they're less than 9%, we get the same as everybody else, but it will never, for this, for the term of this contract, it won't increase more than 9%.
So the cap of 9%?
It's a cap.
Yeah. But you're looking at 27% over three years, and have we looked at what we've spent, what our increases have been consistently from them year, year over year?
It's been less than 9% the last three years that I reviewed, and again, the rates, if we take this agreement or if we... if we take this agreement or if we don't, our rate increase won't change if it's less than 9%. If it's more than 9%, it'll be capped under this agreement.
And then, my other question is, are, we're not required to use Primex?
We are not required to use Primex, but I.
Have we shopped our liability and property insurance, and if so, how recent have we shopped it?
I'm not aware of the town of Barrington recently shopping property and liability insurance providers. The proposal for the contribution assurance program, the three-year deal that Primex offered to communities spurred a lot of conversation among the managers community talking about that, and there were at least four communities which had recently gone through an RFP process for property and liability insurance, and all four stayed with Primex.
So I know, I believe it was done when, right after Dan and I had joined the board, and Primex was the lowest, but not by a whole lot, it wasn't significant that they were the low bidder.
What I'll say is, Primex offers a lot more than property and liability insurance to the town. Primex offers incredible educational and support opportunities to help, being a risk pool, they invest a lot of money in helping to make sure that the town and all communities are operating with limited risk and limited liability.
Any good insurance carrier does that, though? I can tell you that from a business standpoint.
Well, my, my.
Dan?
I don't, we don't have a big pool to choose from anyway, do we?
No.
Like, three people? There's like, there's not a big pool.
Tracy?
So, you know, I recently shopped this for my organization and received a 15% discount for HR practices and adherence with all safety procedures within the building and so on and so forth, and so my only thoughts on this are, it's nice that it's a 9% cap because you can at least plan for it, it sounds to me like you can expect it to be less, and unless we've researched our history and seen a time where the liability and property insurance never went up, then I guess we should take the opportunity to ensure a cap.
And again, the big value add I see is when we add a facility, and if we add a library in two years or three years, that would also be included in the 9% cap, so our rate would not increase that year any more than 9%. So specifically for the town of Barrington compared to other communities that don't anticipate those changes in future years?
An appropriation.
And there is not appropriation.
So I believe we're already paying on the town hall since we pay for everything related to the current town hall, including all insurances related to that.
It's leased space and there's, we don't, yeah, the property, it would be, it was estimated to me at about a 10 to 15% increase for adding a facility even in light of not paying for the leased facility.
I'd be, I don't know, I'm a big fan of going out to competitive bid and see what else is out there and see if somebody else wants to.
One of the challenges that I often find when we talk about things like that is that municipalities seem to be treated completely differently than the standard corporation.
Yep.
And so, and I guess that's understandable.
Do we have a term in which, at what point we have to commit to this?
July 1st is when the contract ends.
Correct. July 1st of 2020, or 2020?
So this, this cap agreement was submitted to the town in May, and please return your executed cap agreement or resolution on or no later than June 14.
Okay. So we didn't have a lot of time.
Well, like I said, I mean, the work that I did in reviewing this and deciding the, how I would recommend the board proceed was researching certainly our history with Primex and participating in discussion among other communities that are faced with the same question, and other communities certainly pursued the opportunities that you folks are discussing, seeking competitive.
Were they like-sized communities?
Approaches.
Were they like-sized communities?
All size of communities.
But before that you talked about, were they like-sized communities? I mean, it wasn't like national courts.
Correct.
Okay. So based on that information, I think we need to like, pull up the second cap agreement.
So with the appropriation clause that's in here, so this will go to town vote as well?
No, so what the non-appropriation clause says is that if for some reason Primex recognizes that working with the public sector, the, there may be a situation where funds aren't appropriated to fund the requirement, it is a legal requirement for the town to carry property and liability insurance, so however unlikely, but it says as long as the board does not facilitate non-appropriation as it means to seek another insurance carrier, the non-appropriation clause covers the contract, exit from the contract if funds aren't appropriated.
I'm trying to think at what point, I know five years definitely has to go, so anymore, so how that works? Three was that limit?
Yeah, so one year, so the select board, without a non-appropriation clause, the select board in most instances is prohibited from making a decision for the town that lasts a commitment, financial commitment that lasts longer than a year. Those decisions are reserved for the residents of Barrington on voting day. The exception to that is if you have a non-appropriation clause. Non-appropriation clause says, the voters, we know that the voters make these decisions year over year, and if they're not gonna make the same decision next year, then you're able to exit the contract, exit the agreement in, you know, a shorter period of time than the term.
The only problem with this is we're hamstringing the voters, they don't have another option because we have to carry insurance, so we're forcing their hand that this is the only option we have.
We have to follow the rules that are set forth for us, too.
So the only other option then is to go out and have Connor get a quote for liability and property insurance and come back with a quote, and then you chance not being part of the cap, so it's a gamble either way.
Is there something other than exploring a price comparison, is there something that the board hasn't been satisfied with, with the services of Primex, that they'd be interested in seeking from the services elsewhere?
Not from my end, it's just, I find that even like my own commercial property, I shop my insurance every few years, I keep them there for a bit, and then you go out and reevaluate it just to make sure you're getting a fair shake, and if we haven't done that in, well, it'll be north of three years now, it's within that window of when it should be done, that's what I'm saying, as opposed to locking in for another three, which is what we're doing by this.
I understand.
I think the, the, no change.
I'll leave it, I mean, it's, we don't have a whole, we don't have a window to work with here, so.
Yeah, you've got four days to make a decision, so I would make a motion that you go with the cap agreement for the three years.
In that motion, can you authorize the chair to sign?
I would authorize the select chairperson to sign, but.
You can't make me.
Now, second.
There I am.
There I am.
Protocol fine.
We're locked in, lean, napa.
I'm gonna get him to vote, but that's a lock.
Locked in, lean, it's my choice word when I'm doing something I don't like.
Welfare lien right off authority, so in April 28th, 2014, the select board authorized Mr. Scruton to write off welfare liens for situations when a lien is uncollectible, I'll let Connor elaborate on that a little bit more, and then we'll have our.
So welfare liens are placed on properties when welfare services are provided, certain circumstances make those liens uncollectible, but the town still carries them, so when a property goes to foreclosure and then sells, we're no longer able to collect the lien, but the lien stays on the property. It's not uncommon for municipalities to allow administration to write off those liens to avoid bringing those situations to meetings, they don't happen frequently, we have one right now, our assistant welfare director was reviewing the situation and recognized that the authority previously given to the town administrator was given to the town administrator by name, not by position, and so the request of the board is to have that ability given to the position of town administrator to perform those duties.
Dan?
I'm not really willing to give up that privilege, it's not really, no.
Prefer living homes before the board?
I don't necessarily disagree.
Can you tell me the amounts, what is the highest welfare lien we have ever had to write off?
It's a good question, I do not know the answer.
A couple thousand dollars. For oil.
I mean, I don't, you're not talking 10, 20,000 dollars.
Yeah, so I'm of the opinion, I personally do not want to go into non-public every time we have to forgive welfare assistance up to the amount of $2,000, so if in the past we gave that responsibility to John Scruton, why would we not transfer the responsibility to the current town administrator?
It's just a matter of if the board wants to be aware of what's happening.
I absolutely think that from a privacy perspective, given the amount of money we've just discussed, that it is best left in the responsibility of our town administrator.
I would suggest if we're going to the town administrator by name, as previous boards have done, if, so we just specifically say Connor, that's.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we transfer authority to Mr. Connor Geiger, our town administrator.
There, now. Aye.
Protocol fine.
Napa.
Information technology upgrade, board's asking to consider $49,062 IT infrastructure upgrade, this is regarding upgrading IT infrastructure to create the continuity that we have been attempting to throughout the year, and I'll let Connor elaborate more on the infrastructure in the middle.
So the technology committee sought bids for an IT services provider, one of the top priorities was addressing the network infrastructure and necessary improvements, identifying that there was significant room for improvement. Rockport previously provided a comprehensive network assessment, presented that to the technology committee, sought feedback and have developed that network assessment and their recommendations into a proposal to make significant upgrades and improvements which focus on redundancy and security. This, the question before the board, so this was presented to the technology committee, the technology committee unanimously supported the effort, and the question to the board is a funding source, so while the town anticipated making these improvements, the town did not specifically budget for the improvements this year. I believe the incident fund, which currently has a balance of $80,000, I believe the incident fund is a sufficient funding source for this project. During the budget process last year, the board identified that we would have technology improvements, including phones and IT improvements, and I believe that was a contributing factor to maintaining the level of the incident fund where it was. I do believe, my personal opinion is that these items such as these are best budgeted for, planned for ahead of time and included in that process. That being said, I do support and would recommend that the board supports focusing on this infrastructure improvement this year paid for out of the incident fund, again, to get the town where it needs to be from an IT network perspective.
George?
What department is not covered in this proposal?
One, there's one department not covered in this proposal at this time, and that's the highway department, due to connectivity issue. All other sites in the town of Barrington are connected by fiber, and that is the infrastructure that this proposal is built on, that network connection, the physical network connection of fiber does not exist at this time for the highway department.
So everybody else is covered, but library, building, they.
The library stands alone, is there a separate entity, but we have proposed that they connect in with this, there's a very small fee for them to become tied into Rockport, and we have strongly advised them that it would be well worth their while to connect in and be part of the Rockport system.
And as for the highway department, so the current solution to maintain and utilize the infrastructure that we already have for safety and security for the highway department is we use a virtual network connection, a VPN connection, so they, whereas they don't have the physical fiber connection, they remote into our site to leverage the safety and security that already exists. That would continue until such time that a physical connection of fiber was made, but we don't anticipate doing that in the near future.
Explanation for the library, are they gonna be penalized in any way for access?
No, so this, the only thing, the only, the only way that this would physically affect the library is it would increase internet connection security and reliability, so as Chairperson Nat mentioned, the library uses their own servers, uses their own infrastructure, they would be able to benefit at a very minimal cost from the increased redundancy and security, they would be able to leverage the same technology, that was asked of the trustees, and it's not an interest at this time, but that doesn't mean that they wouldn't be able to be added in the future. But the only way that this would affect the library is they use the same internet connection that comes in for the recreation department, and that actually comes from the public safety building, and so this infrastructure improvement would allow essentially three internet connections, so if internet connection locally went down at either the library, recreation department, public safety building, or town hall, those sites would be able to use the internet connection of the others to maintain, you know, workflow.
So when, so when the library building fund is approved and they move and they can get completed, then they would have the option, or they could put it in the bid price and turn around and be connected with us then?
Correct.
I would hope that the infrastructure that the board's asked, being asked to invest in would be utilized at that time.
Very well, thank you.
I can tell you, the technology committee made the recommendation to the library to consider using it specifically from the standpoint that their IT person has moved on, and this would be a very inexpensive way for them to assure a safe and secure level of continuity while they transition.
Thank you.
Tracy?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All righty.
I'd make a motion that the select board approve expending $49,062 from the incident fund for comprehensive improvements to the network.
I will second that motion.
There I am. Aye.
Protocol fine.
Napa.
Thank you for your support, I'll continue to keep the board updated as those improvements are underway.
All right, moving right along, paving RFP process and expectations.
Just one additional thing on the information technology infrastructure upgrade, so one of the items that came to the technology committee based on that was the current renovation that is being prepared and finalized for this summer at the public safety building, the IT closet in the police department, it was a recommendation of the technology committee to expand that, secure it, and have a separate air conditioning unit to protect the infrastructure that the town's investing in. Just this morning, I received the additional quote for the work to make those changes. Paul Sanders was of the opinion that it was within the 10% that he had budgeted for, and so he would still be able to do it for the $57,000, but I asked that the board increase the budget for the police renovation by the necessary $2,400 to make sure that there's enough in there to cover other unforeseen circumstances that was budgeted at a contingency of 10%. So right now, I'm asking if the board will support, you've already approved $57,699.63 for the police department renovation out of that capital reserve account, I'm asking that you approve up to $60,099.63 out of the capital reserve for the police department renovation, the increase for that IT.
It's an expensive cause of.
It has to, that wall's looking at, has to be rewired, right?
I'll make the motion.
I'd second.
Expending up to $60,099.63.
Out of the capital reserve, the building preservation improvement capital reserve.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did your second one.
I did.
You did. Napa.
Carter, aye. Carter, aye.
With regret, Bailey, aye.
See, everybody's getting in on this.
It's easier.
There, aye. Thank you. Alright, I hope no one minds, I'm going to change up the order per the request. Raffle permit for Friends of Barrington Library, RSA requires the board to review any raffle permit, and then allows the board to approve this. This is the annual raffle permit for the Friends of Barrington Library.
What are they after?
Gift baskets, children.
So moved, make a motion to approve.
Second it. Yes.
Do we get any percentage of it?
No.
No.
Separate entity.
And then why they ask for permission?
Napa.
Carter, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Ed, aye.
There, aye, yes.
Alright, Barrington Youth Association requests to waive the highway billing policy so that they may put out some no park, eleven to twelve no parking signs. The police, the police chief did weigh in on this and provide his, his commentary on it about parking, making sure it's limited to the ball field side of the highway and not onto the other side. I don't know if Rick has anything else he would like to comment on.
Bring fifty dollars.
Yep, sit.
Wow, I don't think.
So part of the requirement was for, through what our planning process to expand the field, well, my request was that they, that as, from a public safety standpoint, was to place no parking signs in that area because in the last few years, there's been a number of times where people have complained of parking and stuff in this, so I just felt that that was an opportune time to ask the planning board to consider having them put no parking signs and spoke with the police chief about proper placement so that it certainly is not the town's intention to be going to take it in toward cars, we just, we would like people to know that you can't do this. He worked at BYA, they agreed to it, they're going to put about a dozen signs up. There's, there's kind of a little bit of an issue. Town policy says for them to work on, for them to provide work on town property, they would have to show an insurance reminder, which I'm sure they should produce. He asked me, we're going to order the signs, it'll take about a month to come in, can you guys put them up so that you're putting up where you would like them in reference to store rule and stuff like that, and I explained to him that there was a new policy in effect. So I sat down with, we figured it's probably a little less than a three hour project, so based on formula that you folks put in your policy, that's where I came with that little over three hundred dollar price peg. They formally have requested a waiver, and that's why we're here.
Dan first.
I was luckily attending the planning board one night, we went there.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And then the, some of Butters, if they live next door and stuff, and, but they still own from our street and stuff, but basically, I would ask that signs, be no parking on both sides. Both one side, they got parking on the other, then during that special time when you're allowing people parking there, just cover them up. Because if you put a sign to one side, no parking, they got parking on, in front of people's houses, and they'll be more, they'll upset the neighbors more.
Sorry, don't know if it was clear, that no parking is on the, on the housing side of.
No, the no parking signs are going to be placed on the, on the field side, yes.
There's no parking on any street in Barrington without permission from, so it's just the placement of it, it's not giving anyone permission to park on any side of the street.
Please come to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
But my line dread like signs in both sides, I would.
There was a significant cost difference between the both sides, that if the board wants to have that conversation, they can, but there was a significant cost difference to have several.
Well, I know there's, the people are very friendly and nice, and they, they live next door, they accept it, but I don't want to see a sign in front of their house, and that, they wouldn't, they wouldn't appreciate people parking in front of their house, because it says one side you can't park, so people won't park on the other side.
Tracy.
So based on what Marsha just shared, which is there's no parking on any of the roads in Barrington?
Correct.
So, I need to understand this, so I'm having a Christmas party, I have a hundred and eighty-five foot driveway, but fifty guests, they can't park on the road?
You ask, you have to get permission from the police chief. There is a provision, in regard, there is a provision, there's no parking at any time. We have very narrow streets in Barrington, and that's.
You know, this is a hypothetical.
Hypothetical, hypothetically, but, but what I'm saying is there is, the, the police chief can give permission, and one of it is because we have narrow roads, I suppose. I wasn't around when they enacted that ordinance, that's an enforceable ordinance. In, in this case, with BYA, they're creating extra parking, and what they're trying to discourage, especially for safety reasons, the planning board listened to the Butters, is there almost at all times, other than when they have very special events, there is available parking onsite and no reason to be parking on the road.
But when they go into tournament play, there is no parking, and we have to allow them to park there.
And the police chief has all the authority to grant it, and they're well aware of that.
Yeah.
And they're going to try and keep it more organized, because one of the neighbors have said is you have children darting out in between parked cars and whatnot, so they are going to try, there, I believe, they can put several hundred actually onsite with the additional parking.
And, and the only piece I would caution about that is although now all of us on the board as, and as residents know that there's no parking on the roads in Barrington, but all of these tournaments, people are coming in or not from Barrington and do not know the rules and of Barrington.
And that's why I think the, the idea of the signs in that particular area are really important, because they may come not even for tournaments, just to see grandchildren and whatnot, so.
I'd like to change some rules though.
You can.
Why not?
Yeah.
Public hearing can always.
No, you're, you just, you just can't change a rule like that. It has to go to the town vote.
Okay.
Right, but that's what she, we're saying.
Then I would like to change some rules.
Yeah.
Because this, this point frankly, while I am all about safety, there are roadways within this town where you could park on one side of the road very comfortably and still get emergency vehicles in and out.
Well, you contradict yourself because we have winter ban for allowing and stuff in effect too.
Okay, so forget Christmas, pretend it's an Easter party, select person, air.
It's October.
I'm simply trying to say that it, this, this blanket rule does not make sense in all of Barrington.
So my suggestion would be is.
You have to pass permission.
The, hold on, we're not here to discuss the rule at this point. What we're talking about currently is the, the policy around hanging these signs and allowing, waiving our policy for the highway department to put these signs up.
No, you're, no, you're waiving the fee.
The fee, sorry.
So I would make a motion to approve waiving the fee for the BYA.
Is there a second right now, or is?
Or you're going to discuss.
Okay, so wait a second. Carry on with our discussion. Okay.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a second. Let's carry on with the discussion.
My feelings on this are that they should put the signs on the homeowner's side of the road, and when they have a tournament, they should strike up a conversation with the highway department, and maybe allow them to park in that big paved area inside there for the tournaments, and that would take care of quite a lot of the cars and everything else, and all they have to do is take their little feet and walk up to the field, which is just a hundred yards or so up the road.
Hang on one second.
And that's, that's just a, my, my dollars' worth on the topic.
Okay. Dan, and then chief.
I understand that sounds nice, but we need some cleaning it up down there and stuff, but we should really be inviting and asking for trouble of bringing people in there. So I feel we're not ready for it yet, and then two, I don't support, the people who show up, the planning board, the neighbors, they live with it next door to it, they deal with it, so I don't support putting no parking signs in front of their side of the road. I think you go on the ball field side, and I feel as you have both sides, so no one has, everyone has to clear understanding. And when you're driving in there, you're just one way in, and the signs will be on the right, so everyone can look up and see no parking both sides and understand it. When the chief gives a special permission for a tournament, all they got to do is cover up the sign, and it's okay for that weekend.
To address both of those issues, you, this board has in the past authorized, one of them tournaments, or two of them last year, you authorized the road agent to identify an area in around the salt shed, to, for people could park, or were full popular, they could walk out, that, you guys already done that. And I find, my memory serves, should be corrected, what they did is they had people that were working in it parked there, so it left more onsite parking for the visitors as opposed to the employees. So while the BYA hasn't approached us for that, that would be an option for this board. The other thing is, I agree with Dan, I wouldn't want a no parking sign in the middle of my lawn. I think that a, a more attractive approach might be is that, that, we could ask the BYA to invest in some temporary no parking signs in which we could staple them onto a barricade, and we could put them in front of the houses on that side of the street while the tournaments were going on. I don't think it's an issue parking on the side of the street where the residents are only during the time when there's a lot of going on in, in, in the case of a tournament, and from a public safety standpoint, I certainly wouldn't want to see vehicles on both sides of the road, because that certainly would restrict our ability to get emergency vehicles back and forth through there, if, in an emergency, there is a residential they put down beyond that.
I know that does happen, I personally have been down there when they've had tournaments going on, and both sides of the road are jammed right up.
So, you know, probably a, a better alternative would be to work with them and get, try to utilize the area of the highway garage over around salt shed, we could certainly move vehicles around, our vehicles out there, so they could have some parking in that area and walk down the road, and perhaps we should limit parking to one side of the road in their turn.
Alright, so we have a first and a second.
I don't, who's the second?
George, who's the second? Napa.
Carter, aye.
Ed, aye.
Bailey, aye.
What was exactly the motion?
We're waiving three hundred and fifty dollar fee.
There, aye. Thank you. Okay, I agree with the chief's position on working with them and letting, putting up some temporary signs.
So are you guys directing me to work with them, because they do have a tournament coming up in two weeks.
Can, my feeling is they can put the temporary signs out, I don't think you guys need to do that for them.
No, that's right, we can provide them some barricades, which we do in COVID and stuff, I guess my question is, but is this board okay with allowing people to use the parking lot at the highway garage for a full?
I would make a motion to allow the BYA to use the parking lot at the highway department.
For tournaments?
For tournaments, yes, specify for tournaments.
One second there.
One second.
Thank you.
Napa.
Carter, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Not at this time.
So is that an a?
No.
Okay.
Is it an a?
No, it's a, it's a to be determined, later point in time.
No.
Highway.
Before you move on, the last step that the board has to vote on is to allow this to be an enforceable no parking sign, the chief Williams made it, brought to my attention that the board has to specifically vote to authorize the placement of the signs. You voted to waive the policy, that there can be a motion and a vote to place the no parking signs, which will make them legal and allow, maybe the chief needs to speak to it, allow the no parking to be enforced.
The board, we kind of got there in a roundabout way, so I'm comfortable with their enforcing it, because you authorized the waiver of the fee, which in return is authorizing the placement of the signs. So I think we got there. I'm comfortable with it and being able to enforce it, write tickets, tow vehicles, everything that we, we never have to do, because this is events for children, and, and we'll do our due diligence and make sure that that's done, so I think we got there.
Great, thank you.
Good with it, and that'll go into the minutes that I can have a copy of and print and have that recorded if ever needed.
Absolutely.
Which I don't anticipate. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Alright, highway equipment lettering, the town's taking possession of a new six-wheel dump truck, and I'll let Rick take it from there.
So I, I know that the highway department approached you in the past about, they had designed a logo that kind of provided, gave them the ability to have a little bit of an identity, and the logo has construction equipment, and what I'm here to ask is because I'm, we're going to have a new truck, we're going to get lettered, and we have one thing that we've got to do, is I'm asking more for permission or clarification, if you will, to incorporate the town seal into that logo that they use on their letterhead and shirts and stuff, so that we're meeting the spirit of this board and putting a town seal on the trucks, and I am a proponent of the town seal, I like the town seal. But I think, I think it's as important that the fire department has their identity, and the police department has their identity, and that there's nothing wrong with the highway department having their identity, and I think this is a perfect opportunity. I have, I'm happy to produce a, a copy of the seal, or the decal with the seal in the middle, for you folks to see it, but I obviously did not want to go to the vendor and ask him to do that if it wasn't something in your interest in doing. So while I appreciate the policy this board developed, I think this gives us an ability with your, kind of blessing, to meet the, the spirit of having the town seal plus allowing the highway department to have a little bit of their own identity.
Dan?
Since I don't have a life and I drive a truck a lot and stuff, going down the road and stuff, different trucks in the way that letters up, I can definitely, if I were to look at it, just a corner of my eyes up, and people over the years, with the town trucks by, driving by, and there are the emblems in, in there, people know, well, look, this is town truck. We start changing it, we're changing our identity totally and stuff. This is me personally.
I'm of the same opinion that the town seal is the appropriate emblem to be on the truck, and I think when we talked about this before, I was fine with them having their, their logo on their shirts and everything, but felt the town seal was the appropriate seal to be on the truck. George?
Thank you, I was going to say the same, thank you.
Tracy?
Hey, great.
Don, do you have anything?
No, I, I don't see any big deal with a little something added to it, but if that's not the way it is, that's fine too. I mean, in the truck, what I want on that truck is on that truck, but I own it too.
They're not talking about changing the seal itself, are they?
No, no, we would just, we would just incorporate the, the square.
Well, if you incorporate, that means you're going to put it on the town seal.
No, we're going to take, so the, for lack of, so the, the highly designed is basically a square with broken into four pieces, and I think there's four different things. It's, it's big, yes, it's on the bottom of the leather.
The work you received is on the bottom of the leather.
So, what, what I'm proposing that we would do is in the center of that, we'd make it big enough, so in the center of that, we would put a town seal about this big, so we'd incorporate the town seal, but it would also allow that.
If they want to put the seal on, I think they should be able to put, put their seal one-third the size of the town, put it towards back section of the truck, all put on the back part of itself, but I'm not willing to incorporate the town seal with the highway seal, they're, they're two separate entities, I couldn't go, that's why I asked was going to be incorporated, that's not, that's not what we're there for. Like, if they want to have it, they could have a seal of their own, one-third the size of the town seal, and put it somewhere else besides on the door. The door belongs to the town, that's where we need some people seeing.
Well, I think the whole truck.
I was just going to say.
No, but, but I think we.
What I was saying is, saying for the display purposes, so the door would go for the town, and anywhere, I know where you're going, chief, so I can play too, I can.
Now, if you change the identity of the truck, the thing was that would be it, and I'm not for change and stuff, because the, the federal rules, I, that my trucks all let a certain size. I think my trucks all let a certain size and all this. And so, for instance, if we change this whole logo on the truck, I'm gonna get all kinds of phone calls, dual complaint. But when they drive by and so, I don't think it's worth it.
So, is there a motion or are we...?
I think you guys, I think you've pretty much answered my question.
I think if I articulate it, the policy will hold. And if a small area of the truck would like to be identified in a different way, that would be something to identify.
Wouldn't they hang quite a lot of people from Christmas cloud in certain parking areas on certain streets and so?
Right. All right.
Exactly.
Hypothetically.
Circling back to paving RFP process and expectations. The select boards identified certain concerns based on R and D's completed paving projects in Barrington. New Voice and King was asked to investigate those concerns based on the high standards that we expect for the residents of Barrington. Does the town want to consider an engineer to prepare performance specifications to bid? So, an RFB on future paving projects? And I'll let Connor elaborate on anything more than I...
Yeah, so the only thing that I'll add is, as you know, and the memo is attached, the certain concerns were brought to the attention of our engineer. Our engineer has been a valuable asset with the lack of a full-time road agent. And we've leveraged their knowledge base. And so, being involved as much as they have this year, the feedback from the engineer was, you know, the... In the past, Barrington has taken a betterment approach to the roads when putting out the bids. The roads are improved, money's spent. It's not, the town is doing right by the residents. But it seems like this current board has higher expectations for the paving work being performed in town. So, the approach to bidding that work is different if you have higher expectations. So, our engineer, in raising the concerns that I did, that you have a memo attached from, his conclusion of that was, they're doing most things as you're asking them to do. If you'd like to do them more specific or better, then the right approach is to put together a set of specifications as part of the bid process and hold them to that later in the process. The trade-off is you make a little bit of an investment in developing those documents and preparing the bid specifications. The trade-off is you are holding your contractor to a better work product. So, not looking for a decision by the board tonight, but just for discussion. That was the feedback of our engineer as having participated in the process so far this year. And if the board's interested in looking into that or bidding the paving projects different or more specifically in the future, I'd like to know so we can plan for that. So, just a discussion.
I wouldn't mind tabling this until we actually are closer to either looking at it or have a new Highway Superintendent, Supervisor on staff. That's my personal take. George?
Well, I think that, you know, we do hold to higher standard, but we do it because the vehicles have changed over the years, and I think it's time that we take that consideration. I think, I for one, believe that we should ask the engineer to develop a set of specs for us because it just remind the chair, September, I believe, 23rd is just around the corner. We start with a budget. So, if we have something concrete for the Highway Department to use to turn around and to bid with, that'll help us in the bid process. And they need to start, what, sometime in August? So, it would benefit us all the way around if we had that document for them to use. Thank you.
Dan. I have two parts. I agree with you. We started talking about this earlier, generate a list. What are the specifications for that? And then we incorporate in that. And then, I don't know if you guys are paying attention, but the vendor manifest, we've been paying New Voice and King a lot lately. And they've been making a big amount of money.
It's my understanding that that might be based on one select person's request for review.
No, observation.
All righty.
All right. Thank you. Moving along. Select person reports. Dan.
Yeah, very happy that Connor found a new thing to do on Thursday night. And George raised help from all there at the conservation meeting last Thursday. And then I brought four of the Town Lands Committee. They're working hard on this Forestry Manager Plan, and they need more time to review everyone. And then they'll come with a good recommendation. And so, but we had eight qualified people. And to make Tracy real happy, two of them were women. And one of the women was a doctor.
Okay. George?
Thank you very much. I went to the library meeting, and they had a discussion on the perennial sale, which was last Saturday. And I have no results on that because my wife made a decision that we had enough flowers, so we didn't go to that one. And so, I could back the blame someone.
I'll bring a man over. We can cut into that supply a little bit. We went to the perennial sale, and it was wonderful. They had a very, very wide selection, a ton of very helpful folks helping out, and it was a great event.
So, financially, how many of you?
Well, that's it. Better than previous years. Yeah, they were marked. Thank you.
Don?
Are we on for...?
No.
Marcia, are we on?
No. Nothing if there's no ZBAY this month.
So, I left a meeting with Connor to rush over to the school board meeting that was published at some point because it was in my calendar and came to discover they were at their board retreat. So, I took a picture of the building for select person to make.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the rec doesn't meet until...
I'm so sure glad I don't live in a glass house.
I think next week, yeah, I'll have to check.
So, Planning Board, there was a fairly lengthy discussion on... Excuse me. There was a fairly lengthy discussion on the subdivision that is being proposed by Mr. Felzoni, the 55-block conservation subdivision with a five-block commercial subdivision. If anybody would like to see all drawings, plans, anything, I brought them with me. There was also a discussion on the driveway accesses for Southeast Land Trust, two different parcels of property there, which actually led to a very good conversation also around driveway permits and the fact that we do require a driveway, that we actually specify a culvert, that we don't always hold people accountable to putting in. And then there was also a discussion about the slope and impact of a driveway for Ramstelwood subdivision, actually right down the road here for us, which led to some very interesting information being proposed or put forth to the board that was not approved at that point. And then the flower drive, which we voted on tonight. There is also moving forward, just so that I have it before the board on the 18th, is the information regarding the subdivision and buildout of Mary Hill Road, Meeting House Road, sorry. And I have all of the land sets. Is anything anyone would like to see? Did I miss anything, Marcia?
I just wanted to give out. There was a discussion saying that there's no follow-through on culvert installation, and I think that's an incorrect statement. When culverts are required, they're on a driveway permit prior to getting a CO. It is required that the Highway Department sign off on those. If they're, if it's due to weather or cold, they can't do it. A bond is put in place. So, I know in regards to Thatcher, many, not all, depending on the topography, but there were culverts required for driveways on Thatcher.
Dan, I don't think I said no follow-through, though. It was... Yeah, what it, really what our conversation was around was the in holding people accountable to putting in culverts, even if there isn't water at that time when it's there. And the concern, I believe actually, as I raised, was around some of the driveways that had been done that didn't have culverts more recently, especially where you looked at large sloping roads coming down off of them.
Yeah, I know if it's required in the driveway permit, they will do it. I know sometimes there's issues with ledge and whatnot that may get an issue, but they're clearly, Highway Department works very hard to make sure that there is no water going into their roadway and creating a safety hazard.
Yep. Yeah, this was never meant as a jab at the Highway Department or any one of that sort. Dan?
Since you're on this conversation, basically it's observation of the lay of the land and water to deal with it. But we need to establish a new rule pretty soon about culverts and so. My feeling is if someone goes through the proper procedures, installs the culvert to town specs, and things pass, eventually I feel we, since it's in the right of way usually, that we maintain it after that. But people have to follow the proper channels. Go through the driveway permit and install it correctly to town standards or whatever, slope back, pitch right away. Once they fulfill that, they met the obligation. But then it comes to liability to the cost of the town after the fact if it fails for some reason. Because we're accounted in that now, and I believe in basin drainage and so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to commit the town to that. So, I'm not gonna comment on it. Dan, Eric, go ahead. George?
All right. I just suggest that we make a notation or ask to have a notation put on the driveway permit that's something that has to be checked off on the permit itself so we can go from there. In other words, if it needs it, they put it on the permit, say, yes, it needs it, or no, it doesn't. Is there a section on the permit that says either yes or no?
They have to provide that with their permit, and it's...
But is it on the permit? And so, it says, okay, thank you.
Yes, definitely. And usually, it's written right out in a sentence and whether...
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
And then lastly, before we have our public comment, just to recognize two people that are here from their work anniversaries. Suzanne McNeil for 39 years of service. And Mr. Huckins for his six years of service. Thank you. Last public comment.
I've got 12 years volunteer time before that.
I've got 12 years volunteer time before that.
We don't count that.
Howdy, gang. It's been a while.
Good evening.
Sam Borick, 34 Stanley Lane. Hope y'all are doing well. We were...
Hecklers in the audience.
Yeah.
Man. Anyways, yeah, just a real small side comment. Obviously, it was months ago, weeks ago at this point. I'm disappointed to learn of Peter's unfortunate departure. I hope that treatment of, and treatment of town employees is improving. I certainly respect the fact you guys are honoring different accomplishments of our town employees. But I hope that anybody that contributed to that decision of his has really taken a good, firm look on how town employees are treated because they certainly work really hard for the town. That said, I wanted to note that one of the other reasons why I want to hop up here is I wanted to note because of the discussion on solar for the town office and energy efficiency. Thank you, Tracy, for bringing that up. That the US GBC, the US Green Building Council, their chapter in New Hampshire is hosting an event in Brentwood towards the middle of the month, June 19th. I've actually forwarded email onto Connor, looking forward it onto you all. It's June 19th, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And it talks about how they installed solar in the town of Brentwood, municipal solar, which they expect could save the town taxpayers as much as a million dollars over the life of the system, minimize the environmental impact of the town, and offset 100% of the municipal electric load, with the exception of the school. So, it could be a cool event. I think it's a ticketed fee event to go, but I'm checking out anyways because it could be a good ROI on that. On that same topic of green building, if you're looking for board members, I don't know them well enough to ask myself, but green building, there is some serious green building talent in town. I know folks like Jack Bingham, I believe Chris Tendorf are in that field. They may be helpful to have on that board if they're willing to.
What was the second name? Sorry, Sam.
Chris Tendorf. I believe he's in the...
Thank you.
Solar energy world. I think they partner up together. At least it was an RFP a few years ago, or not RFP, but a proposal a few years ago for solar, town solar, which got smacked down by some nubism. Sorry for anybody who's listening who might be offended by that. The last thing I was just gonna mention is on the RFP, I would encourage, if at all possible, that that building committee, or that the board encourages that building committee to move at the speed that they can. Because we were told by our, the library trustees were told by SMP that costs of the buildings are going up. I think it was 5% per year is what they're projecting. So, yeah, the sooner you get those numbers formed up, the better. Thank you.
All right. Make a motion to go into non-public for personnel reputation legal.
Who's second?
Yeah, we'll do that usually after.
Here I.
Early on.
Heart of a pie. US Green Building Council, what was the date on that?